Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sergeant Munoz, Socorro PD. This meeting of the City of Socorro City Council is set to begin. Gentlemen, please remove your hats and everyone, please silence all electronic equipment. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated and violators are subject to ejection and possible prosecution. La junta del Consilio de la Ciudad de Socorro está por comenzar. Caballeros, por favor quitarse las calzuras y los somberos y todos, por favor poner en silencio todo tipo de equipo electrónico. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento prejudicial o revoltoso. A quien no siga estas reglas, se le sacará y puede ser infraccionado.
It is now 6:00 PM. This meeting is called to order. Item number two, pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, recognition to Socorro Independent School District students from San Escondrias Elementary. Item number four, establishment of quorum.
Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevaris.
Here.
Alejandro Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Ivy Avalos.
Here.
Rudy Cruz.
Here.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos is absent. Mayor, we have a quorum?
Thank you.
Item number five, proclamation to designate May as National Historic Preservation Month. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as Historic Preservation Month in 1973, to promote historical places, to instill national and community pride, promote heritage tourism, and show the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. And whereas the City of Socorro, Texas has long realized the value of good stewardship for its rich historical heritage and theme for the National Historic Preservation Month. And whereas the historic preservation is an effective tool for communities across the nation for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas it is essential to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals and groups in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people, including the City of Socorro Community Initiative, the Socorro Historical Commission, Del Paso County Historical Commission. And whereas the City of Socorro partners with organizations and individuals throughout the community to implement and appreciate revitalization efforts, efforts, offer educational classes, educational classes, networking events, promotional events, and actively support historical preservation and awareness throughout the community. And whereas it is essential to celebrate the city's natural, built environment and the contributions made by the dedicated citizens in preserving these surroundings, which gives the community its unique sense of place and identity. Whereas the City of Socorro's Rio Vista Farm has been recognized nationally as a recipient of the following: National Trust for Historic Preservation, National Treasure Designation, Preservation Texas Most Endangered Place, Texas Historical Commission State's Antiquities Landmark. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Socorro, proclaim May 2022 as Historic Preservation Awareness Month. In addition, we call upon the people of Socorro to join their fellow citizens across the United States in participating in this special observance by visiting and shopping local and historic districts, appreciating historical sites by way of guided or self-guided tours, and sharing your experiences with the world through geo-tagging on social media.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Victor Reta, Historic Preservation Officer. Here with us today are members of our Historical Landmark Commission. This resolution, I'm sorry, proclamation is very important, not only for our own efforts, but for the efforts of our future city. This will go in as evidence that our City Council does support our goals and our objectives in revitalizing not only the Rio Vista Complex, also known as the Rio Vista Campus, but also our Historical Preservation District, which is the Mission Trail. This will go and help our grants coordinator to go ahead and reach out for additional funding by way of showing that our council is committed to seeing the same future for our city. Throughout the month of May, you're going to see various public programming and public events take place throughout the city, acknowledging our historic preservation, not only on culture, language, language arts, but also gastronomy, which is a huge trending topic for heritage and tourism, such way, by way of our actual recipe book that we've created, not only in years past, but also the ones that we're going to receive in the future. We will also include our senior citizens, our local business owners, and other members of the community to go ahead and help share the story that is Socorro. At this time, I'd like to request that council take a group photo with members of our Historical Landmark Commission. Representing the Historical Landmark Commission, we have Vice Chair Ricardo Rocha and General Members Andres Apodaca and Sergeant Jesse Montelongo.
Item number six, public comment.
Mayor, we have two speakers. Matthew Dudley. Mr. Dudley, you have three minutes.
Okay, so, alright. How you guys doing? Me and my wife recently purchased a home here in Socorro about in 2020, and I wanted to bring up the fact that the homestead exemption, the City of Socorro doesn't recognize that. So, El Paso County gives an exemption of minimum of $5,000. We still get the, you know, SISD for the 25 for the school, but we don't get anything, not even the $5,000, for the City of Socorro. So I wanted to bring that up as a concerned individual because every little bit helps and since Socorro is growing, there's going to be a lot of younger individuals moving into homes and not allow that exemption. And whether they look into it or not, that's on them and that's what I looked into and found out. I talked to the Central Appraisal District, Mrs. Kilgore over there, and I spoke with the city manager here, and I, you know, wanted to relay my concern because the more we grow, which we are growing, there's going to be a lot of other people that are going to be curious about that exemption, I feel. So really, I mean, I think that it would be doing a disservice to the other people that are coming in, finding out later on that, hey, you don't get this exemption, where the City of El Paso gives it, as well as El Paso County, and Socorro does not. And it's really just up to us and up to you guys here in invoking that, because it's been put onto the seat of Socorro. I've talked with the comptroller, I've talked with CAD, and it's on Socorro for that exemption to be taken care of. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hector Ramos. Mr. Ramos, you have three minutes.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Me acabo de enterar que la compañía de luz está pretendiendo cobrar 30 dólares mensuales. Todavía no está claro, o no lo entendí muy bien, si es a todos los que instalaron paneles solares, o a todos, en general, a todo el público en general. Quisiera saber, bueno, la ciudad del paso ya está haciendo una propuesta para cancelar ese cobro al de la compañía de luz. Quisiera saber si nosotros ya lo contemplamos hacer algo al respecto, y si en el futuro se puede implementar tener nuestra propia compañía de luz que surta a la ciudad, así como lo hacen en San Antonio y en otras ciudades. Gracias.
Gracias.
Mayor, those were all our speakers. Moving on to presentations, item number seven, presentation by city manager regarding March 2022 monthly report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here to provide you the highlights for our monthly report for the month of March. Our Municipal Courts Department collected $120,505, received 438 citations from Socorro PD, 16 citations from DPS, 51 animal control, and 72 ordinance violations. Our HR department had no civil service meeting due to lack of quorum. We had six new hires, Ruben Acevedo, full-time labor, Pedro Cruz, part-time labor, Jeremy Smith, dispatcher, Esteban Cifuentes, police officer, Marian Duron, planning clerk, and Isabella Perez, recreation leader. We did have one separation, Alexa Soto, from equipment operator. Our Parks and Public Works Department worked hand-in-hand with Water Irrigation District to pave the replacement of moon culvert. They did replace the new roof and canopy at Bulldog Park, repainted entry sign on Bulldog Park, and continued with a systematic approach for weed control and maintenance for all parks. The Police Department received 1,469 calls for service. Officers continue to attend training to keep them in compliance with TICLO requirements. Our city clerk prepared agenda and minutes for meetings scheduled March 3 and 17, received 37 open records, responded to 31. Our Planning and Zoning Department collected for the month of March $287,000 with 460, I'm sorry, $287,462. Issued 169 permits, 297 registrations, five applications, and 61 letters. Code enforcement issued 99 notice of violations, 59 cleared, issued 58 citations. Received 181 calls for animal control, 44 impounded, and 13 citations were issued. Our Recreation Department participated in the TDX conference. Senior citizens celebrated Mardi Gras with a tri-color pancake breakfast. They also enjoyed green Krispy Kreme donuts with an Irish soda on St. Patrick's Day. There was 200 senior welfare calls, 920 senior meals were delivered in the month, also worked on the application and contract with the state for the half program, had an HLC meeting on March 30. 14 items were approved, two items were tabled, and kept up with all social media platforms, media inquiries, and press releases. Our IT department is planning stages to expand the Wi-Fi network at Bulldog Park, planning for an acoustic panel installation in new court Zoom public kiosk area, planning for the installation of a new server at PD, assisted with all city council and commission meetings, and troubleshooted all IT-related issues for the city departments. Our Grants Department was awarded $71,863 from the Officer of the Governor Homeland Security Grant Program for Operation Stone Garden. We were also awarded $85,000 from Officer of the Homeland Security Grant Division for Local Border Star for 2022 and 2023. The economic recovery activities launched in March 2022. First monthly small business support meeting held on Monday, March 7. 169 small businesses were reached via small business meetings, email campaigns, and no one in-person meetings. I'm sorry, one-on-one person meetings. The Community Initiative did have a meeting on March 9 and March 30, submitted the grant application for Texas CDBG Planning and Capacity Building Program, prepared and submitted two CARES Act reimbursement requests to El Paso County totaling $286,000, continued to work with El Paso County Town of Horizon and El Paso County Water Improvement District to adopt MOUs as required by the Texas Water Development Board. Our City Auditor finalized review of bank reconciliation and journal entries for the month of January and February of 2022, reviewed bank reconciliations and journal entries for March of 2022, finalized the testing for fuel management system, internal audit for fiscal year 2021, and continued with the review and submission of invoices for denim engineering. Do you all have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos is absent.
Moving on to our regular agenda, public hearing and ordinance.
Motion to approve, second.
It's a public.
No, it's.
Can we have a motion to delete as it didn't?
Postpone or delete?
To postpone.
I'd like to make the motion.
Twelve and 13.
Okay, is 12 and 13, I was told, 16 and 17 as well? Is 12 and 13 the only two items?
Correct, to postpone.
Okay, motion to postpone.
16 and 17, according to Mr. Gaynor.
Is that true, Mr. Gaynor, 16 and 17 as well?
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. Carlos Gaynor, yes, sir. So it would be items 12 and 13, and 16 and 17. You know, there was, as you know, the PNZ needs to vote on these before. There was an oversight on my part on the agenda items, so they didn't get to vote on them on Tuesday, and so we'll bring them back to you in two weeks.
Motion to postpone items 12, 13, 16, and 17, second.
Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos is absent. Mayor, for the record, Mrs. Villa Lobos just walked in at 6:18.
Okay, item number 14, public hearing of an ordinance to amend Chapter 32 Parks and Recreation, Article 4, Park Use Permits, Section 32-128, when required of the City of Socorro Municipal Code. Public hearing is open at 6:18 PM. Would anyone like to speak on this? As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at 6:19 PM. Item number 15, second hearing and adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 32 Parks and Recreation, Article 4, Park Use Permits, Section 32-128, when required of the City of Socorro Municipal Code.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Carlos Gaynor with Planning and Zoning Department. Hope you all are doing well. So this item is, as you all may remember, a couple of weeks ago, city council has directed staff to start looking at various policies and ordinances as they relate to parks and recreation. So this is the first one of two that we have lined up for you. If you noticed on your consent agenda, there's one that deals with park fees, which will be heard two weeks from now, but this one deals with the permitting of alcoholic beverages on city parks. And so, Kurt, next slide, please. So what we did is we took the ordinance as it is today, and so for the record and for your information, currently, the city does allow alcoholic beverages on city parks, but through a permit use, a use permit from, so the way that it reads, Section 32-128, when required, Section A, subsection A, use in alcoholic beverages, any group or organization desiring to use park facilities for a specific purpose, which purpose will exclude the general public, and for the consumption of alcoholic beverages, shall obtain a use permit from the city before engaging in such activity, which use permit shall be issued by the city manager or designee on form supplied for this purpose. So that is what's currently on our ordinance. What we are proposing, next slide, is just to add a little bit more criteria to the use permit, and so the first one would be that no people shall possess or consume alcoholic beverage in any city park facility or identifiable area, except as provided by this chapter, right? So again, unless you have taken out the use permit, it is unlawful to consume alcoholic beverages on city parks. Number two, the city may, by ordinance or lease agreement, exempt portions of such park from the prohibitions of this section. It just gives the city manager the ability to enforce the ordinance as written. And then the other sections, next slide, please. Section three goes a little bit further when it comes to the use permit, right? So again, when somebody wants to come in and utilize a use permit for the alcoholic beverages consumption, the city manager or their designee, or designee, we should strike the word there, may grant permission to an applicant to possess and consume alcoholic beverages in a city park with the following conditions. Number one, that the applicant execute a rental agreement for the use of the center of the city park, which currently, again, if you want to use a city park facility, you have to use, you have to get a rental agreement. Number two, that the applicant has paid the fee. Number three, that the applicant, as part of the agreement, will restrict alcohol consumption to persons 21 years of age or older. Number four, that the applicant, as part of the agreement, has agreed to provide a minimum of one security guard per 100 people expected at the event. And then number five, that the applicant has agreed to provide portable toilets for outdoor events, control of ingress and egress, trash disposal, any other reasonable conditions imposed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. And then the final, number four provision, is that the city council, in its discretion, may grant permission to an applicant to possess and consume alcoholic beverages in open park areas for special or ad hoc events, provided, however, in granting such permission, that the city council shall impose whatever conditions it deems necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. That gives you a little bit more discretion than what the currently ordinance says, if there's a special permit that comes in. Mayor and Council, we'd like to have alcoholic beverages. What number four is saying, that you have the ability to impose a little bit stricter conditions than what currently the ordinance says. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Villa Lobos?
So, that last one with grant, for example, we just had Easter, and I celebrated it at Cougar, and everybody was drinking. That would, that would help them, not help them, but that would be the special occasion, the exception, the.
No, ma'am, not exactly, so.
It would maybe legal now.
It would, so, I think, I think it's still illegal to consume without, without the special.
It's illegal right now.
It's illegal right now, if you don't have the permit, right?
Just for the record, I don't drink.
I know, it would still, it would still be illegal if you don't take out the required permit.
That's exactly right.
So you still need a permit, even if there's going to be like holiday or something, people are celebrating, Fourth of July, for example.
Yes, ma'am, you would, so, so imagine you or others, someone, hey, we're going to have a party for Fourth of July. We like to rent one half of Cougar Park. As part of renting that Cougar Park, we like to serve alcoholic beverages. Great, here's your special permit, but you have to comply with all the different provisions of the special permit application.
Gotcha.
Mr. Cruz?
So, Mr. Gaynor.
Yes, sir.
For instance, if the city was to celebrate a Fourth of July event at Cougar Park, and it's a city's event, and we, we say we want to allow the consumption of alcohol, that would be on the city. You're talking about private events.
Yes, sir.
As a requirement for permit. Can you also add the container? I'm totally against glass being brought into the parks, just because it breaks, it shatters, whatever, and then you have glass now in the parks.
So a couple of things, one, on your first point, just, I think, just to clarify, I still think that the city would still need to take out the special permit, right? Even if it's a city event, hey, Fourth of July, fireworks, the city wants to sell alcohol, the city would still need to come to city council like we do for every other permit. So I think that the city's not exempt from this, right? The city still has to abide by it, even if it's us.
Does it state here?
Yeah, it doesn't state that here, but, but in the past, we've, you know, any, like the parades come to you, right? So we could make it clear, and then the reason I'm looking at number one, on the second one, I think, could it be a floor amendment as part of what Mr. Cruz is suggesting?
Right, on the container question, usually on, if there's like a lease agreement and the city's going to allow somebody to lease a thing, it's going to have several other provisions in there. One of them is the containers, usually it has something about security, and every time you issue a special, I guess, a special permit.
Yes, sir.
You can also make that a restriction with a whole bunch of other little, you know, little things on there. They'll even have things like about the hours, what time people can be out there, it's not going to be like 2:00 AM, things like that, so.
So we'll make sure, we still have to draft the application, we'll make sure to add that. No, for example, no glass containers allowed.
Ms. Villa Lobos?
So, let's just clarify, because you said the city's selling, we don't sell alcohol, but we allow vendors to come in and sell, and we would have to take out a permit, or they, we would have to take out a.
We would be the event coordinator.
Right, we would have to take out a, for them.
No, for our, so we would take out a permit for the city to have an event where there's alcohol that's going to be available to the public.
Gotcha, alright.
There's one more thing, if I can add to, that they'll still need to follow TABC rules anyway, so that's, you know, still in effect, something I mentioned.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, second.
Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Human Resources Department, item number 18, discussion and action to approve the amendment to the employee handbook, Section F, Compensation F10, longevity policy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Carol Candelaria here, HR Director. Yes, the discussion and action to approve the amendment for the employee handbook, Section F, which is our compensation section, the policy number would be F10. This policy is a longevity pay. The longevity pay was enacted under the Texas Local Government Code, Section 141032. This act, or this pay, is for all peace officers that are employed with the City of Socorro in the Police Department. The eligible to, the peace officers are eligible to receive additional money, which is equivalent to $4 per month, in addition to all. money for each year of service, not to exceed twenty-five years. This was presented to civil service on March twenty-second, and I would like for your approval to amend this to our employee handbook. Are there any questions to this policy?
Motion? Second.
To approve?
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevarez?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number nineteen, discussion and action to approve the amendment to the employee handbook, Section F, compensation F-eleven on call pay.
I think we missed one, mayor. It's item nineteen?
Mentally?
I apologize. Discussion, item number nineteen, discussion and action to approve the amendment to the employee handbook, Section G, time off, G-eleven, mental health leave.
Good evening again, mayor and council members. Carol Candelaria here. Thank you. This is discussion and action to ratify the amendment to our employee handbook for Section G, which is the time off section. Our policy number would be G-eleven, and this is for the mental health leave. This is also was enacted by the Texas Local Government Code, Section six-one-four-zero-one-five, that all peace officers employed with the City of Socorro Police Department are eligible for this leave. The peace officers are, of course, means the individual licensed and are secured in the capacity with a T-CO certification of law enforcement. Leave request is for a traumatic event, which occurs during the course and scope of the police officer's employment, when the officer is involved in a response to an investigation, or an event that causes the peace officer to experience an unusual, strong emotional reaction of feelings, which would result in an adverse effect on their mental health and their ability to perform their essential functions of the job. Major disasters, incidents is one case, line of duty death or suicide, death of a child resulting in a violence or negligent act, officers involved in a shooting. The duration of this policy is that the peace officer is eligible for up to three work shifts per occurrence, extended up to a possibility of five work shifts, with the approval of the chief of police, provided that such leave is substantiated in write, is subs, 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 excuse me, substantiated in writing by the officer's treating physician. Leave beyond five days would need the approval not only of the chief of police, but it would also need the city manager's approval. The leave is compensated at one hundred percent of the officer's regular straight time rate. The leave policy runs concurrently with all relevant city policies, including the FEMLA. While on paid leave, the officers will not use any of their paid leave, such as sick leave, vacation leave, et cetera. Provided the officers have exhausted their mental, their mental health leave, the officers may be eligible to receive other leaves, such as sick leave and FEMLA. That's only if they have exhausted their mental health leave. The officer and or supervisor must contact the chief of police to request the leave if it needs to extend beyond that. Chief will need to review the leave and provide a response within twenty-four hours. Prior to the return of the officer, the officer must submit a medical release and or additional information to the chief of police prior to them returning to work. This would have to be a notification of fitness of duty. On March twenty-second, the civil service has approved this amendment to our employee handbook. I am requesting your approval for the ratification of this policy.
Motion to approve?
Second.
The motion has to read ratify, so we can enact it when it was passed, when, when the legislative session was passed. So just the motion to ratify.
Motion to ratify.
Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevarez?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty, discussion and action to approve the amendment to the employee handbook, Section F, compensation F-eleven on call pay.
Good evening again, mayor and council members. We are requesting the ratification of this approved amendment to the policy for the date of March twenty-second, as it was presented to civil service. This policy is going to be our policy number F-eleven, which is under pay time or in your compensation policy. This policy is to establish and provide payments to employees that are scheduled to respond after their regular work hours on weekends, holidays, to perform emergency or other needed skills or task. It is also going to be, it has to be available and funding in order for us to continue with this policy. Employees designated as on-call are eligible for additional compensation, and it follows one hour of pay for each weekday at employees' current hourly rate, two hours for a weekend holiday, as defined, the weekends as defined as Saturday and Sunday, as well as the holidays at the employees' hourly rate. The department manager will determine the individuals assigned to the on-call. Employees must be available to receive and respond to calls and or messages, and be available to be on-site if needed, within one hour of time as notified. Salary-paid employees, which are your exempt salary managers, are not eligible for this on-call pay.
Motion to approve? Second.
Can we have the motion read ratify?
Yes. Can we have the motion re-ratify?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevarez?
Thank, yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes. Thank you.
Planning and zoning department, item number twenty-one, discussion and action to approve Resolution six-ninety-four for the replat of Baba Unit One, replat A subdivision being a replat of Lot Three, Block Two, Baba Unit One, Socorro, Texas.
Mayor, council, good evening. Carlos Gaynor, once again. This is a replat application. So the information that's in front of you, it is the request to approve a replat. You shouldn't say preliminary and final plats. It's a, it's a replat. There's no zoning in it, because it's in the ETJ. It's right outside the city limits. I'll show you a map in just a second. So it also doesn't comply with a future land use map. The land use currently is vacant, and the request, again, is to replat the property for development purposes. So there is an existing recorded lot. That lot will be subdivided into three lots, and a drainage lot, and there are no public improvements. Staff is recommending approval, and the PNZ also voted to approve two weeks ago by six-zero. Here's the location map. So again, it's on the intersection of Gateway Boulevard East and Nuevo Waco Tanks. The zoning map, again, does not show any, there's no zoning, since it's in the ETJ. Next slide, please. Here's a view of the property. So again, it's on the intersection. There's Gateway Boulevard East, the aerial. Next slide, just shows you the lot that is currently vacant. Yes, sir. Next slide. So the original plat is Baba Unit One subdivision. The parcel in blue is the one that's being replatted. And the next slide shows the replat. So again, it's three commercial lots. There's a drainage lot to carry the water from each of the different lots. And it has been reviewed and complies with the subdivision ordinance. And happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevarez?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-two, discussion and action to approve an event permit, as per Section thirty-six dash fifty-five of the Municipal Code, to Serenity, Esquire, and Therapeutic Services at one-oh-one-eight-eight Socorro Road on May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Mayor and council, so this is a request for a special permit for an event. The code requires that any large-scale event in the City of Socorro come before you for a permit. This is a fundraising event at Serenity and Esquire and Therapeutic Services, located at ten-one-eight-eight Socorro Road on May twenty-first. The event will take place from three to nine PM. It is a fundraising event, and it is our understanding that they don't, they're not requiring traffic control or crowd control. It's, everything will be on the parcel of line.
Motion to approve? Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevarez?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council.
Mayor and council, item number twenty-three, discussion and action to replace or appoint additional legislative liaison to the committee.
Motion to approve? Second. This is my item. On April seventh, council approved the destination of myself, Alejandro Garcia and Ivan Colom Villalobos, to serve as liaisons for the legislative session. The City of Socorro finds itself in a position of opportunity, opportunity that will enhance the quality of life, boost economic development, and create jobs beyond manageable. We currently have members of the council who already established relationship with these currently serving on the state legislature. This will propel our city to the next level. At this time, I would like this council to make a decision in replacing or appointing another member of the council to represent our city for the reasons stated. The city cannot afford to lose another opportunity to speak, be heard, and it has already happened in the past. With the event that would take in place, it seems we find ourselves in the same position we were two years ago. Our main goal and objective is to progress our city, and therefore, it led to be said. Strategy and the ability to position the strength of this table should come without person of desire, but the desire to help the city in the current capable state.
I'd like to state my interest in, in being the replacement of the legislative liaison.
Well, it does say replacement. I'm sure you're going after my position. You guys, I came, I brought this to the table. I did not get to execute any of it, except three meetings because of, of COVID happening. So if we're, I, why not add you to the list instead of replacing?
I suggest adding somebody, we can have three. It does say, appoint an additional legislative liaison, so why not have three, in case somebody can't make it for any reason?
So in the past, how many liaisons have there been?
Two.
Two.
So, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of things. You just want to make sure that we're on the same page here. And, and the full, we, we had a meeting, and I want to make sure that we're on the same page, and sometimes it happens where we're not. So I want to make sure that we're all in on this. So I'm going to make my motion to approve Rudy Cruz to replace Ms. Colom Villalobos for the legislative liaison. And I have a question for the attorney.
Do we have a second?
I'm in agreement with, if possible, three. If it must be two, then the replacement, and I vote for that.
Correct. So there's no bylaws that would require only two or three, right? It's, it's up to this council.
My, the only issue that I have is the what-ifs. You know, we have three, and then two only show up. Then do we make those the designees? Do we make those who are forefront for the city? Or do we go with three, and only two show up? Or three, and only one shows up?
I have a question.
Mr. Cruz?
So my question for the attorney tonight, when there's three council people in discussion behind closed doors, does that warrant a quorum? And the discussion of the items that are there, those have to be displayed here at every single council meeting, once discussed behind closed doors with three council members, yes or no? That way, there, there should only be two representatives speaking at once. That's why I think in the past, there's only been two legislative representatives, because that doesn't warrant a quorum.
Well, and that would be three voting members.
Correct. So that's my question to the attorney.
Okay. There was a couple things you mentioned. Yes, everything needs to be discussed in open city council, if, because you said something about closed doors. But I don't believe that there's a requirement on the number of people on the liaison. I, you could change it to two or three. So I don't know if that answered your question.
I think my recommendation would be to stick to the two, just to, because you would have three voting members discussing the legislative agenda and making almost decisions without bringing it to the public. So I would caution, and just, you know, to be safe and making sure that we're transparent, I would leave it at two, because that would put three voting members.
Ms. Villalobos?
Okay. I don't think this is fair at all. Okay? I attended the three meetings. Last meeting, unfortunately, I completely forgot, did not attend. But you were getting updated, Mr. Garcia, on what I already knew. Okay? Not that I'm making any excuses at all. But I did bring this item. I have not been able to fulfill, fully fulfill the position because of COVID. And I know that you guys want to hand everything to Mr. Cruz, but the, the reality is, is that, you know, I brought this item. Don't take me away from it. I'm still here. I'm still working, and a lot. So I asked respectfully to respect that I, this item was brought in, because it's something that I had passion for. And so I want to continue to move forward with that.
Go ahead.
I would ask for you to refrain from these type of comments, like the one you just made regarding Rudy Cruz. I vote based on my opinion, and that's it.
I didn't mean any disrespect.
Okay. Thank you.
And do we have a second?
We do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevarez?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
I guess, yes. So unfair.
Item number twenty-four, discussion and action to appoint Angelica Barrera to the Historical Land Commission.
Ms. Barrera not here today, but she will be appointed at a later time. So motion to approve? Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevarez?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-five, do we have a motion?
To delete?
Motion to delete? Second.
We're not going to discuss it at all?
It's a swearing.
It's a swearing.
It's a swearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevarez?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
And I apologize. I have twenty-four, twenty-three, and I thought this was twenty-five, and it's twenty-six. I don't have twenty-five.
There's no, no...
Oh, okay. That's why. Okay. Thank you.
Item number twenty-six, discussion and action to instruct city manager and her designated assistant to obtain pricing for a solar or electrical speed sign, cost not to exceed two thousand five hundred. If approved by council, speed sign to be placed at Villa del Mar as a permanent speed sign.
Motion to approve?
Can we please, the aerials?
Second.
Can I ask the question on this one here?
Correct. So we're, I know that she requested for us to... Mayor, can Mr. Cruz ask a question?
I, I believe she's going to present the item first.
I mean, I don't know. He asked if he could speak on the item.
Okay, just give me a second.
I'll allow for Ms. Villalobos to present her item.
Ready?
Go ahead.
All right. So I brought this item because I've had these constituents, mainly some constituents there, and, and one particular one, since I started council here. And Mrs. Rodak has been kind enough to send police officers out there and put speed signs, electrical speed signs out there. They continue to complain on a monthly basis, sometimes every two weeks, about speeding vehicles. Unfortunately, the street is too, I believe, narrow and small for, for, is this correct? For hum? And they did have, a couple of times, a electrical speeding sign, or a solar speeding sign out there. And they did say that it was working. Once it was removed, then they're having the speed, the speeders go through there all the time. And, and I, you know, she asked me kindly, and I don't see, oh, the backup is back here. She asked me kindly to please put this item on the agenda. And, and again, I know that we could be, you know, setting the precedence here for the future for other people to ask, but nobody's asked, as she has, on a monthly basis, all the time, Ivan, we need this, we need that. On a monthly basis, all the time, Ivan, we need this, we need that. And so this is why I put this item on the, on the agenda.
Mr. Cruz is next. Mr. Cruz?
Thank you. Um, yeah, like Ms. Villalobos stated, I mean, if, depending on how we vote tonight, this could set precedence for the future. I just want to know, should we establish some type of um, uh, ordinance for the request of, or, or what? Because I've had several residents ask me for speed bumps, signage and, and things of that nature. But my response to them has always been, do me a favor and, and go through the proper protocol, filling out a um, a um, what do you call it? A petition. That way, we can, we can recognize all of those residents' concerns and then maybe, dependent on the study conducted by our local law enforcement officials, if they say, yeah, you know what? Actually, this area does warrant a, a traffic signal of, of some type, then, then we can, then the city can make the um, the expense of, of purchasing that. But I, I get it, exactly what Ms. Villalobos said is, is going to happen. I know that maybe later on down the line, we might get calls from our constituents in our, in our districts and ask us for the same thing. So it, it, the information is, is, is the request being based off of, like, the study, has there, is there backup data that shows?
Correct, if you allow me.
Mr. Rodarte?
But I know Mr. Nevares was.
Oh, Mr. Nevares.
Well, I, I just wanted to add, I'm sorry, um, because we've been getting a lot of calls from Warsham and uh, some other streets where now the, these desert vehicles are so popular that we're getting a lot of uh, speed complaints lately. Is that where that's coming from, or?
So, so the reason I wanted this map, and I almost forgot, is because to avoid uh, Socorro Road, they're coming in through these streets, all these cars, and then to get into their, turn to their left, okay? To get into their residence, and I think there's maybe seven or eight streets, and they're using the street to come in through there, and they're speeding through there, because Socorro Road is always packed. So this is why, she said it was working, the speed signs were working, and I didn't hear from her for about three weeks until they took them down. Mrs. Rodarte had, the police officers have conducted.
Correct.
Right, you want to?
Yes, so the speed tracker has been placed there on several occasions on Villa del Mar. We do have the report available from February through April of twenty twenty-two. Before we go to the report, I would like to show council the neighborhood traffic management program that the city council adopted back in November nineteen of twenty twenty. This traffic management procedure outlines the process by which neighborhoods may request traffic calming, establishes the criteria for determining applicability and appropriate measures. Pages three, four, and five provide and describe this process. This information is available on our website under the Planning and Zoning Department. I have also sent this information to some council members requesting this information. I know Ms. Colombia Lobos has received it, and also mayor, I don't, I think yes, that I rece- I mean, I've sent it out to several. Moving on to the report. I wanted to show you, this report reflects the street Villa del Mar, which is point thirty-four miles in length from February first to twenty twenty-two through April first, twenty twenty-two. The chart identifies that the incoming vehicles, which is a total of four thousand nine hundred and thirty, daily average of eighty-four vehicles per day, there is a ninety-one point ninety-one percent compliance. Based on that data received, we are unable to approve or justify the calming device based on the criteria that we set back in November of twenty twenty.
Mr. Garcia, who's next?
So it, it, what it says here, it's ninety-one percent compliance, a lot, with the law.
So, so for, so out of the four thousand nine hundred, was it, it's four thousand nine hundred and something, four thousand nine hundred and thirty vehicles. Four thousand five hundred and thirty-one are below the twenty-five miles per hour.
Right.
You have two hundred and ninety-four vehicles that go from twenty-six to thirty. You have the eighty now from thirty-one to thirty-five. And you have thirteen, uh, forty miles, three, forty-one to forty-five, three. And then you have forty-six to sixty-five, zero. Accidents reported, there's only been one in the last three years, and that was back in two thousand eighteen.
Right, so the only thing that is here, we're going to set precedence to our, if we were to approve this, would set precedence on bypassing the application process?
To me, it's, we, we have a process that was adopted in order for us to make those determinations. Based on that criteria, it doesn't qualify for us to place, but that doesn't mean that we can't go to a different, that's why they get moved, right? When we receive complaints for uh, speeding, we move those signs in order to gather that information and be able to make an informative decision based on the criteria that we've set.
Mr. Nevares?
And I believe that based on having that traffic uh, speed tracker in place for, for this amount of time, that's where you have that reduction. That's where the constituent sees as, well then, maybe that's what we need here in place now. But then again, it goes back to what the council folks are saying, we're setting a, a precedent here where everybody's going to want one. And, and we definitely need them everywhere, um, but we just can't do that right now. I suggest we either purchase another one so that we can rotate them a lot more. But look at what this does to folks speeding.
Correct, so through our budget workshop, we can definitely allocate funding to purchase, you know, another, I do have uh, Sergeant Haciel Munoz here, in case you have any questions. He's the one that pretty much is the guru with the reports. And um, he did mention something to me earlier today, today, that these specific signs aren't meant, they're just meant to gather information, correct?
Correct, ma'am. Uh, good evening, Council Mayor, Sergeant Munoz, Socorro PD. I am uh, I'm a little bit more familiar with the piece of technology that we currently have. Uh, right now, the piece of technology that we have to capture that data is, is specific, specifically for that, to capture that data and give you all an informed decision on the actual traffic study that's being conducted. That piece of technology has different uh, settings on it. The one that we use right now is specifically for uh, the criteria that we're meeting for this city, so therefore those numbers are, are very accurate. The report that came out is ninety-one percent compliant with the sign being there, and almost five thousand car, four thousand three hundred cars, almost four thousand four hundred cars going through that area.
I mean, we can always look at the criteria, if that's something that council wishes to, to do and, and change that criteria, but we would have to place an item on the agenda to, because right now, um, one of the determining factors is it has to be five hundred vehicles per day that pass through there. So I mean, I could see Rio Vista Moon Road, um, us using those type of devices because they're highly trafficked areas.
Ms. Villalobos?
How about a, I have several questions. How about um, more signage? They only have one speed sign there. And not just a speed sign, but something catchy, or I'm sure it's out there, slow down residents, something to that effect on both sides, left and, and right. And then also the residents had said, what if they were to purchase it? Could they put it up, could the city put it up for them?
Well, it's on cities right away, we don't want to put it up, because then we become liable for it.
How about this, the, just the uh?
The sign, so we have to make sure that it follows the, you know, the requirements, we can't just put a sign. I, I don't know, I mean, we can look into.
Right.
What, what other?
It would, obviously, it would be signage that is approvable by the state of Texas and our ordinances and whatnot.
And I can have Mr. Gallinari kind of look into that and maybe have something for our, in our budget workshop. That way, we can determine if we want to buy signs, or we want these electrical ones, in order for you to make a decision.
And the, the thing is that we all get, we all are in the same boat here. I mean, I've, I've dealt with these people from almost day one of, of my first um, uh, term and now, and then they continue. And, and I know she's called you, Mr. Reyes is not here, but when I was out, he took care of her. I think Ms. Mayor had also taken care of her. And she doesn't stop, she's non, and, and you know, it did, it did help them, it did work, but.
Correct, but we have one resident that has not filled out that application. We don't have other residents that have filed the petition. We have one resident, yes, and I mean, I get those calls, also the speeding, and that's why we send the tracker a- around, and then once you show them the information, they're like, okay, well, that makes sense. But we, we do rotate them, and if we don't get a complaint in a while, and we get another complaint, we move it back. I mean, Villa del Mar has had it there for a while, right? And then there's also accidents that occur, well, that this resident states that occur, and doesn't want to call the police department.
And, and.
So we can't gather that information to make a more informative decision.
But we, we have to do something, though, we can't just leave it.
But we can't do something just for one resident, though.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying.
We have to be for the, for the better good, right? And that's why we have to have a criteria, because we're going to end up years ago where you see speed humps, or you see stop signs, when you're, you're like, why am I stopping here?
Yeah.
Because council members would just, you know, election time would come, and everybody wants to put a stop sign, a speed hum, uh, everywhere, so there has to be a criteria somewhere. What I'm saying is, let's look at the criteria, if there's, if you feel the criteria is too harsh, okay, then what's suitable for you all, and what, what do you all want to? You know, if it's five hundred vehicles, too high for you all, do you want to change that? But those are the things where as policymakers, you can make those changes, and maybe the criteria would.
Mr. Nevares?
How, how many uh, speed trackers do we currently have?
Two.
Just two?
Yes. And they're not highly, I mean, right now, we had to move that one because we received a complaint on Effie Jackson. We have one on Maxine, sometimes Patty Joe.
Yeah.
Uh, that I can think of, but I mean, we don't really get, it's just in certain individual places. But I mean, we need the residents to also work with us, I mean, if there's an accident, call the police department, so we can gather that information and be able to justify how we're spending taxpayers' money. Because your taxpayers look, while they're placing a sign there, there's no accidents. So I mean, they have to help us too, and make sure that they report those things, and that way we have more data that we can make a more informative decision.
Mr. Cruz?
Ms. Rodarte, the, the management plan that you just showed us right now, who implemented that plan, or how, how did it come about? How was it developed?
That was uh, Michael Medina from the NPO, the former director of the NPO, he was our planning and zoning director.
Mr. Medina?
Yes.
The one who's no longer with the city?
Correct.
Okay. Do you think then, because I think Ms. Villalobos' item doesn't state, let's go install one. I, I think her request was, can we find pricing for one? And then maybe, maybe we can work alongside our partners at Tech dot, because I've seen similar uh, speed trackers. And again, I don't know how much they cost, right? They vary in price depending on the features and whatnot. Maybe we can work with Tech dot and say, hey, what do you all recommend for residential use? Because I know like on, on state highway, that's, that's a whole nother uh, process and, and corridor study and stuff like that. What is the recommended number? Is it five hundred, should it be less, depending on, on the data that we can provide Tech dot and stuff like that? Again, these are just ideas um, for, for, for the future. Should a petition get started, and if one was to have been presented tonight with two to three hundred signatures, would that automatically qualify that street for the installation of the speed tracker?
No, it, it asks for ten.
For ten?
Ten residents, uh huh.
So.
Uh, if you can pull up the NTP. I mean, it's very specific, right? Of, of what needs to happen. But again, that's something that's already been adopted.
Right, right.
So we can only follow what's adopted.
What we have currently in place right now, right? I understand.
Uh, so that one tells you the initial, can you zoom it in? So the initial assessment, it's any roadway that is greater than a collector roadway. Right, so it, it, it gives you, the roadway segment must be one-third mile or more in length, and must be continuous without interruption by a traffic control device. Villa del Mar would just, would, would pass that, right? Uh, the application to traffic calming must be completed by a total of ten residents, or two-thirds of residents in less than ten exist that are affected by the roadway segment. Right, so there's very specific information that we go by. With this particular, though, there, there hasn't been an application completed for, for, like, a formal application.
The request.
For this type of process, uh huh. And then it tells you the priority list when we're receiving these requests, right? Because if we receive, let's say, a hundred requests, you have to prioritize them. And this, this is kind of what we, we go by. If you can go to the very end of that to see where he gathered that information from, it, it gives you the references, the very end of the document. So this is kind of what they have in, you know, the City of El Paso, Lubbock, Tucson, and then the, he's following the federal highway administration, which is with Tech dots.
Right, okay.
Sorry, I'm like, sorry, guys, I see everybody like.
In, in my opinion, I say we should think about getting more of these um, during budget time. I've gotten complaints as well from Villa del Mar, but they just, they, I, I give them the form, they don't fill it out. I've given the form many times, and it's just never gotten back to me. It's either people don't want to fill it out, or maybe, I don't know if they find it, you know, going to uh, different people's homes a little too, uh, too much. But I say we, we have to do something about it, so might as well, you know, we only have two, might as well, you know, talk about it more in depth during budget time, seeing if we can get some other ones.
Correct, and I'm going to recommend that you place an item on the agenda to make sure you change the policy. That way, we don't, staff doesn't feel like we're violating what was adopted back then, and, and we go by the new set of rules that you all wish to impose.
Ms. Villalobos?
Just to add to um, and it, it's every complaint, it's not just, I mean, we can direct them, but they just don't want to. And a lot of times, they do say they just don't believe in the city. That's the bottom line. And it's unfortunate, because these are new procedures that we have at least the last three years that I can think of. You know, procedures where we didn't have this before. And, you know, where our citizens, those that are fed up, will come to the office and complain about it, and, but they won't fill out these, these, these uh, procedures that we have. And they don't think we're going to do anything about it, so.
I, I just believe that it's a combined effort from both the resident and the city in order to make a difference.
So my, my suggestion is I'm going.
I mean, we can sit there with the applicant and fill it out for them.
Right, that's exactly what I'm feeling.
You know, we have them, the length of the street, we have all that information available. But I mean, we have a process, right? So we, we can, because there are people that fill it out. So how fair is for those people that do fill it out? Or just remove the policy? And then every item, every, will come to council for approval? I mean, I just don't know, but right now, we have a set of guidelines. We check them off, and that's our, that's how we provide a response.
And, 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 I'm sorry, ma'am.
Mr. Garcia.
And only in a personal note, I, I got this form, and it is time consuming. And guess what? I didn't finish it. So, you know, if we make it easier, I guess, if we do something for our, you know, because it is time consuming, even somebody that, we, two people worked on it. And it's just, you know what? Ah, hold on, we have to do something else, hold up, and it gets forgotten. So maybe we, we uh, change it a little bit. Because it is huge, and it does, you know.
Can you put the application on the screen, Victor? It's towards the end of the document.
Mayor, just real quick, I, I do agree with this, because if folks will call in, complain in, or say they need something, but the minute you talk about the part they need to fill out, or the shared responsibility here.
Right.
Folks just.
Yeah.
Drop it.
They, yes, I agree.
I think the best way to kill two birds with one stone here is there may be some redistricting coming up here pretty soon, okay? Each district is going to.
Each district is gonna be, become equal in population. I feel personally that if each district could possess their own tool, that is property of the city and can be moved around from street to street, this would kinda calm everybody, it's even, it, it, it helps, it's equal, it's fair, and it's not just one street getting the sign, or the street, uh, the safety tracker, right? The speed tracker. I think it's just, a district should possess one, and we can move it from, from street to street, whenever the complaints arise or the phone calls come in, I think that's the fairest way to take care of this right here, where the city can, can actually engage in, in tracking that, rather than just setting up the, the system. May, maybe that's an option for us.
So we just wanted to go over the application, it, it tells you the date, what type of complaint it is, a description of what it is that you're experiencing? And then the names of people, of ten people that live in your area, or?
What's the title of this form?
It is called the Neighborhood Traffic.
Oh, the N, N, the NTP?
The NTP.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Management Program, yeah.
And is this for all signage, or is this for? Anything, loud cars, anything that's a nuisance, right, to the neighborhood?
Correct, so go up to where the beginning of the form, but I mean, it's not really hard, all you're asking them is to give you the dates. What is it? Is it safety, speeding, excess traffic, cut-through traffic, bicycle or pedestrian, commercial vehicle restrictions, parking, noise, or others? Just give us a brief description of what it is, right? Because I mean, we have to know, we have to have it on file of, of what's happening, and then we're asking just for signatures that, it's not just one resident, right? It's affecting, like, in that area, I mean, that's a pretty big area, I'm pretty sure she can get ten people to sign. But I mean, really, that's all that we ask for, go further, is that the whole application?
Uh, so parts A, B, and C, C is where you're asking for all of the applications to put their information, it seems like a lot, but you're just requesting the actual individual for the address that's supporting your cause.
That way, we can verify the information.
It's traditional that people see it.
Yeah.
Ms. Vialobo?
And, and just real quick, I understand that, because we used to do the, we didn't have that before, we used to have, like, just a petition where they would sign, remember that? And I understand, and I did talk to Mrs. Patricia, who happens to be, everybody goes to her, and then that, this is why she wrote what she wrote back here, um, everything, she's like the liaison for that area. I did tell her that we could get everybody together and, and just have it signed on a weekend or something like that, and I'm willing to go out there and, and present it to them. She just doesn't seem to, that's.
Mayor, if I may, and to Ms. Rodarte's point about wanting to chime in, I didn't wanna chime in, but let me, let me go ahead and.
Sure enough.
Just because I think that there is one caveat, Ms. Colombia Loz, so I don't want you to go through the process of doing the application, right? So the application is one thing, and I think Ms. Rodarte had pointed out earlier, there's still some criteria that you have to meet, and when we looked at it, she asked me to look at, at the data yesterday, we, I did, I reviewed it, I didn't wanna chime in because I think she covered everything that I would've covered, but now that the application's coming up, so when we reviewed the data from the street that the police department provided us, one of the criteria that, that anyone would have to meet when they submit this application is that the street needs to have a traffic volume of five hundred vehicles per day.
So we have to change that?
That, that's, I think that was Ms. Rodarte's point, that, that it is a little bit, actually, so the five hundred vehicles a day, so just to finish my thought on your, on the street that we looked at, I did the math that the police department provided us, just divided it, the, the volume of, traffic volume by thirty days, I think it was out there for a month.
Sixty, yeah.
Sixty days, yeah, so then it comes out to about two hundred and forty, fifty vehicles per day, so it wouldn't meet this criteria, so I don't, I'm, I'm re, I'm providing this information, because again, I'd hate for you to go to the exercise of the application, and then we come back, and guess what, Ms. Colombia Loz and neighbors, you, you're still not getting the traffic calming device, so again, I think Ms. Rodarte has a great point that, in my estimation, I think five hundred cars per day is excessive. No residential street in Socorro would ever meet that, because you don't have the population density, you don't have that, most subdivisions don't even have two hundred, two hundred and fifty homes, right? So, just wanted to throw that out there, as you consider this, that you would still have to meet the criteria, and this street would not meet the criteria based on the data that we have from the police department.
So this is step one, step one before we do any of this.
Yes.
So, do, so we need to bring a new item, because that, we're not, we're discussing about a, a solar, like, yeah, so we need to bring it back to change the ordinance.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to, I guess, delete the item, and, delete the item, and then I'll come back with something, what you guys were suggesting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Loz.
Thank you, gentlemen, and Mayor, yes.
Do we have motion for twenty-seven through twenty-nine?
Motion to delete?
We don't have anything. We don't have, do we have anything for twenty-seven through twenty-nine?
Motion to delete, if we don't have anything?
No, we don't have anything in the second.
Motion to delete twenty-seven through twenty-nine?
Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Loz.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Ruben Reyes is absent, Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Loz.
Yes.
Meeting adjourns at seven fifteen PM. Good night.
Good night.
Goodbye.